Kenny Pittman, how are you, sir?
I'm good. Thank you so much for having me, man. I'm excited.
Yeah, man. Thank you for coming on. You are running for Eagle City Council. It's a hot one.
Again.
Again.
Yeah.
When did you run? Because you didn't run in 23, did you?
No, I ran in 2018 and was elected in 2018 and served through 2021. And then when my reelection was coming up in 21, one of the reasons that I didn't run for reelection was I had a little grandbaby and I wanted to spend as much time as possible with that little grandbaby because he was moving out of the state. So, and it's a lot of work, you know, I give kudos to everyone that gets into local politics, city council races, mayoral races. It's not easy and it's a lot of work, but I absolutely loved it when I did it. Yeah.
That's awesome. I like, you must have seen so much from not just leading up to your election in 2018, but seeing the Eagle that was pre-COVID and then being in the thick of it during the pandemic and then stepping away and just saying, hey, look, man, I got other things in my life that you gotta get after.
Yeah, yeah.
That's wild.
And if I could go back a little bit before that, I grew up here. I've been in the Treasure Valley for 47 years, 33 of those years right here in Eagle. And I went, did all my schooling here and went to the military, came back and decided that this is where I wanted to be and raise a family and it was just a beautiful place and didn't want to go anywhere else. Ended up having several jobs after the military and ended up getting hired at a payroll company here locally.
You've worn the shirt.
Paywise.
P E S W I F.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 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 So I've been, I've been the president of marketing for that organization for 25 years where our 25th anniversary is on September 11th.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome. So your roots obviously go deep here, right? You've already served the city of Eagle. Why are you coming back?
Well, I got a lot of phone calls and a few emails for individuals that didn't like what's happened in the last four years. And, and I could see some of the concerns and issues that they had. And that needs to change. We need to get Eagle back to where it was. We need to have the transparency. We need to have the financial and fiduciary responsibilities. You know, I just don't feel that they've, they've been doing that over the past four years since I've been gone. So.
Talk to me about this, right? And again, we have plenty of time. What is happening either financially or, you know, with the responsibility to the citizens? What is happening that you are worried about or people you're hearing from are worried about that you feel like you can address?
Well, so you had mentioned COVID. I was in the middle of that. I was luckily lucky enough to serve under two different mayors because the mayoral race is, you know, every two years, every other, every fourth year. And I was serving with Stan Ridgway for the first two years and then under Jason Pierce, the second two years. And when COVID hit, it was devastating to all of us. And, you know, we had to focus on our community and we had to make things accessible, even though everybody wanted to shut us down, right? And so it was a great decision to, and I believe it was a great decision to keep Eagle open for the, for the community and the people. Cause it was, you know, nationwide, everything else was shutting down and we were losing businesses and Eagles hub right now is small businesses. And we couldn't watch those guys fail. We had, we had a system. You know, some of the, of the federal money that was brought in during the COVID times, I think it was so much money that they just wanted to get as much as they could to spend as much as they could. And it wasn't, it wasn't feasible because some of.
When you say they, who's they?
When I say they, who wants to?
You said they wanted to get as much money and spend as much. Who's they?
I think the city wanted to bring in as much money as possible to create some programs and do some things that, you know, potentially would not be good in the future because we couldn't, we couldn't keep up with, you know, the funding.
Yeah. Once the grant runs out.
Yeah. What, you know, what do you do? What do you do? How do you, you gotta look, you gotta look ahead. And if you, if you go through the archives of when I sat on city council, there was, there was a lot of, a lot of times where I was one of the only individuals on the, on the council that would, you know, want to deny some things that were, that were coming up and brought up. And of course I was, I was defeated because it was, you know, three to one. And I just felt that they didn't look far enough ahead and I tried to explain that to them. You've got the money now, but where is it going to come from in the future? So what do you do? So, you know, that was, that was kind of hard. That was, that was part, partly hard.
And not to be critical of, of the city, but Meridian is actually going through this kind of at the heart of their, their levy issue right now. They did hire on some people, I believe, under temporary funding and now that funding is getting terminated and they have to ask the people of Meridian to.
For more money?
For more money. Now again, like no shade on them. I'm, I'm sure Meridian will figure out what works for them and, you know, they will engage. The citizenship will get exactly what they want, which is either, hey, yeah, let's, let's personally fund this or like, no, you know, we don't, whatever it is. But there are examples around the Treasure Valley of cities making those decisions on, on, you know, funding that is now being terminated and, you know, then it, then it goes to the citizens and they have to decide.
Yeah. And a lot of citizens don't want to, you know, have property tax increases and, and all of that to bring in more revenue for the city, right? To spend unless it's on something, you know, important, like, you know, more parks or things like that.
Sure.
You know?
Are there examples of programs now that you see those like, ah, we're running into this barrier where, yeah, we had this money. You initiated this program and now we're going to have to either terminate the program or we're going to have to get people to pay more money. Like, are there examples of that?
Well, yeah, the fiber one would be, would be one. I thought, you know, it was a great idea to bring in fiber to see if the city could, could, you know, help out the residents and maybe reduce some of the cost to the residents. And I thought it was a great idea, but I don't think it was time to do that, you know, it just wasn't time. I wanted to see it, but how do you fund it? So I think that was.
That's a big one.
That's a big one right now. That's one of the, one of the concerns with, with that, you know?
We also have the, the sportsman park, right? That has been delayed, right? They got the bow, the bow range set up, but they haven't finished that and it's not slotted to be finished anytime soon, is it?
Yeah, no, it's not.
Gotcha. So those are two, those are two obviously big ones.
Yeah, those are big ones. You know, we don't have a park on the west side of Eagle Road for the residents of Eagle. And, you know, back in, in 20, I think it was 2019, we had purchased a property.
Yeah, right.
It was 38 acres. And it was on the west side of Eagle Road, which is, you know, in the downtown or not in the downtown, but in the heart of the community out there. And, you know, in my personal opinion, when we approved that, it was a great location. It was going to bring a bunch of community together on the west side instead of people having to travel to the east side or all of the parks on the east side of Eagle Road. And then the, the, the new mayor didn't feel that that was the, the right location. Started talking with the developer of Valnova up there and came, came up to with an agreement to get some land out there to, to do a big giant sports park. And that's great, you know? That park, and it's done. So, I mean, it's, it's up there. That's what we have to work with now. So we're going to have to figure a way how to, how to fund it. And in the future, it, it, it will be a good thing for Eagle because it'll bring in revenue. You know, you'll have the soccer tournaments and the baseball tournaments and the lacrosse tournaments that, but that will come from maybe even out of state to use, to use the facility. And that will do wonders for our local businesses, our downtown businesses, our downtown core, and possibly even some of us small businesses.
Right.
So.
Right. And again, do me a solid, push this mic a little bit because you're kind of going. Oh, there you, there you go. Perfect, perfect. The, this was an interesting one because this was a big point of contention in the 2023 race. I remember former mayor Ridgway talking about West Park and saying like, look, we had this chunk of land that was, that was accessible via sidewalk, that was, you know, closer to the heart of downtown. It was going to serve a lot of people. We ditched that and yeah, we got a bigger chunk of land over in the sports, the sports park, but it's super far away. So like you have these two separate uses. Yes, perhaps West Park in its original iteration would not have, have garnered the same kind of, you know, national or interstate kind of competition and attention, but it would have served the residents of Eagle and the children of Eagle and the young people of Eagle better than one that was super far removed.
And that's our purpose, to serve those locally.
Yeah. That being said, is there a solution? Because one of the big things that Eagles, like budgeting for Eagle is, is, and, and cities in Idaho in general is really complex, right? It is. It's complex in that we have services like fire district, right? Eagle Fire District. Well, first off, the Eagle Fire District is not funded by the city of Eagle, nor does it only serve Eagles. But like it's called Eagle Fire District, which screws up everything.
Yeah.
You have, you know, mosquito abatement districts and you have all of these different districts that are designed to give voters the capacity to vote on increases or decreases of that individual thing. So it's essentially like having a giant budget that you get to flip on and off switches collectively for. Instead of, you know, in the state that shall not be named that I moved from, you had all of this money funneling through cities and then being used for a multitude of purposes. And it's my understanding, at least within the emergency services in, in Idaho, you have plenty of instances of, of firefighters and fire representatives here explaining to former residents of, you know, the old state saying, hey, look, you don't understand, the city never touches this money. This money for the fire district goes directly to the fire district. It's not getting mismanaged. It's not being sifted off the top. Like there's none of that, right? So we have these problems, but what Eagle does do is it does absolutely have a robust parks and rec center. Like it was one of the first things I saw with Eagle when I, when I moved here. So I actually came and saw the, came and saw Eagle for the first time, likely just two weeks after the election that you, you know, didn't, didn't participate in, in 2021 because I came like the week before Thanksgiving in, in November. And I saw, or stumbled onto Reed Merrill Park. I was like, holy cow, like look, first off a chicken, that's cool. Like, look at the care that has gone into this place. Like the grass is beautiful, you know, the play equipment is beautiful. The river was beautiful, very well maintained. The path was great. I didn't see graffiti. I didn't see beer cans. I didn't see homeless people. It's like, this place is the Mecca. And it's something that Eagle takes really seriously, right?
Yeah.
Do you think that there is, do you think that there's value in trying to explore finding funding for another West Park-esque installation? Where it's like, okay, yeah, we have this sports park and like, that's going to check this box for attracting outside commerce. It's gonna, it's gonna be awesome for people that can transport themselves. There are high school students and things of that nature. But for the kids, right? For the kids of Eagle. We still need this park where they can ride their bike or walk. I mean, the mayor of, the mayor of Boise makes this point very clearly. She's like, we have, I think it's like 75 to 80% coverage where you can walk to a park within the city of Boise within 10 minutes. It's like, and 80% of the kids within Boise have that accessibility. We don't have that in Eagle. So do you think there's, uh, do you think there's value in exploring a way to add in another, another park installation perhaps? You know, in whatever timeframe, or do you think that the, the park that we have developing right now should be, would be sufficient?
I, you know, I'd be all for a west side park. Again, you know, I don't, you'd have to look at the, at the budget and the finances and all the stuff that comes in.
Land is not getting cheaper.
It's not. And it's, and it's, you can't, you can't build any more land, right? So as it, as it develops, if it's not a park, then it's going to be housing or, or commercial or businesses. I think it would be wise for our city to look at a future park on the west side. Yes, for our local residents. You know, one of the things about the sports park is others, others from our area, Starr, Middleton, Meridian, they're all going to use that park. It's, it's because it's going to be so big and what we wanted or what they tried to accomplish as far as bringing in individuals to use it for tournaments and events and things like that. It's, it's, it's going to be a nice park. You know, I have no, no problems with it. It's just the funding is where you have to look at. And how long is it going to take? Is that going to be a 20-year build out? Well, what do you do with that land if you don't get the money or the resources and, you know, for 20 years? You've got 20 years of not having a west side park where our residents, you know, can, can go and play. And it, it's not that far to Merrill Park or to the, the Ada County Bike Park, Friendship Park. But, you know, these are all little smaller parks than if you look in Meridian, you know, Kleiner Park's huge and Settlers Park is huge. And, and we need, we need a larger, a larger entity, park facility for, for us locals, right? For, for our kids. Yeah.
When, when you talk about the financial situation, what, what is the current state of the finances for that development, that park development?
For the new one or for the new one?
For the one that's going on now?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. I, you know, I haven't, I haven't researched it, Matt, to tell you the truth on, on where we sit. I know they don't have funding to do it. I mean, it's, it's been brought up on, on podcasts like yours or, or in the, in the newspapers and, and things like that. I think the city really thought that trying to partner with larger corporations and companies like that could bring in some revenue to, to help it grow and develop quicker. I just don't think that they have the ability right now at the city to, or the personnel to go out and market the city. I think we need to bring that back. When I was on city council, we had a business, economic business developer that went out and tried to market and hustle Eagle, right? Tried to bring in new businesses and larger businesses. We love our small business community. We absolutely love it. But for us to, to spread out the tax burdens from the, from the residents, it needs to come from businesses, right? So we need to bring in some larger, some larger businesses and, and show them what Eagle's all about and get them involved in community so that they will participate. You know, I'm all about community. My, my spiritual gift is, is service. That's who I am. You know, I'm, I'm a current interim president for the Eagle Kiwanis Club locally.
Awesome.
So we do a lot of work for the local Eagle kids and seniors here. I'm vice president of the Crime Stoppers of Idaho.
Oh, that's awesome.
I've been on that board of directors since 2014.
I had, I had Bree Derrick on a couple of years ago.
Bree Mason.
Bree Mason, excuse me. Yes. Derrick is IDOC.
Yeah. Bree's our current president. Yeah.
She's fantastic.
Yeah. She's, she's awesome. And she runs, you know, if it wasn't for her, I don't think the program would be around anymore because of what happened with COVID. But that's a sidebar. That's something we can talk about later. You know, I'm currently a vice president of my HOA, right? In Homestead. I, I'm, I'm a veteran. So I am part of American Legion Post 127 here in Eagle, along with the SAL, which is the Sons of American Legion. I'm currently the treasurer and sergeant-at-arms for those programs. I was involved and have been involved with the local chambers for over 25 years, both Boise and Eagle. Our company is, is members of not only those two organizations, but Meridian and Nampa and Caldwell. Because I feel, you know, reaching out and being part of your local community, even if you don't technically live there, is important. It's important to build relationships. So I do a lot right now in the community and I always have. And again, it's because I want to serve the people. And then when I say people, I mean all people. I'm not, I'm not speaking on a, on a political format, right? I'm, I'm here to represent our people. And those people are the residents that, that live, work and play right here in Eagle.
When you, when you talk about people coming from out of the area to use the, the sports park, right? And again, it makes total sense. You're like, look, we got this big installation, city of Eagles paying for it, citizens of Eagle are paying for it, but other people are using it. Absolutely. My mind instantly goes to Avamore, right? Which was one of the large explanations for people that were in favor of it were saying, hey, look, those people are coming into Eagle and using Eagle and we might as well garner some tax base from them. But it was also a very, very, you know, heated and charged, charged decision. Obviously you had an enormous, enormous public participation outcry from the community that, that was like, hey, man, we don't, you know, like public comment was like 300 people deep and the vast majority of them were like, hey, we don't, we don't want Avamore as, as part of the city of Eagle. And some people did obviously, and Avamore is now part of the city of Eagle. What, what do you think about that? Like, is that, do we get, get a lot of benefit? Obviously we can't change it now, right? But is that a decision that you think was a good one? Do we, do we stand to benefit? If we stood to benefit, have we realized those benefits or was it a bad decision?
Yeah. So Avamore came up right before I got it, before I got out in 2021. And I don't think they, I don't think they pushed it through until after they found out I wasn't running for reelection and that I wasn't going to be reelected. In my personal opinion, you know, annexing Avamore would be okay, but it wasn't the right time. There was a lot of contention, as you stated, with a lot of residents not happy with, with bringing in Avamore. And there's a few reasons for that. You know, one of the things is, you know, the number of homes that they had up there, you know, to annex them, that's not going to bring anything in, you know, it's not going to bring any, any tax revenue.
Right. Really eight or 900 homes or something.
It's really not that much. We had issues with, you know, the, the law enforcement and safety, fire, you know, fire district and all of that up there. So we, we wanted to deal with that and make sure that, you know, there was proper coverage. Plus you've got three counties up there. You know, and, and if somebody's arrested in the, on the Gem County line up there by an Ada County sheriff officer, do they have to take them to Gem County jail and prosecute them through Gem County as opposed to Ada County, right? I mean, so there's just all kinds of stipulations that you have to look at when, when things like that happen. Avamore is a beautiful location. They've got wonderful trails, you know, and, and I'm happy to hear that, you know, once it was annexed, that they were allowing the public to go up there and use the facilities. I kind of thought that they were holding back and saying, if you don't, we won't. But it annexed, so, you know, the, the citizens of Eagle are allowed to go up there and participate in the, in the trails and things like that.
Is the, are all, now that it is part of the city of Eagle, are they allowed to say like, only those who live in Eagle can enjoy these trails or is it now?
No, no, I think it's, I think it's just.
If I'm from Caldwell, I can go up.
It's open to the public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But, you know, I, I think, you know, and you talk about water too. I mean, we've got, you know, concerns with water up there. And I mean, there was just so many things to really consider. And I don't think the council at the time really considered all of the, all of the things that they should have considered, but it's done. You know, it's done. And so we've, we've got to support Avamore now. We've, we've, they're, they're part of our community. So we must support Avamore and, and we must do what we need to do to, to get the development to, to start moving on and actually develop more so that we can bring in that revenue that we were expecting and things like that. So.
Is that the last bit that you're saying, we need to do what we can to get the development moving forward? Is that an obligation or is that even really something that the city should engage in? Right? Because it's like, look, you're the private developer. Yeah, you're part of the city now. You develop or you don't, that's on you, man.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that, that I want to bring back to council is looking at the, the planning and zoning. And some of the things that are, are listed as ordinances and, and, you know, minimums and maximums for setbacks and, and development agreements. I personally believe that development agreements should have a, a, an expiration date for, for a review. An example would be if a developer comes in and, and they want to develop, let's say 40 acres and put 70 houses on it. And they come up through the, through the planning and zoning and through council and it's approved. That's great. They have the development agreement. And then someone turns around and purchases that development. They, they can, they can just turn around and purchase what has already been approved. Number one, I think if that happens, we should instill a review process that the new developer needs to come back in front of city council for a review of the development agreement. One of the reasons for that is because if, if he starts developing three years or four years later, has any of the city codes changed that maybe we need to relook at and put into the development agreement? Because, you know, you kind of grandfather people in and then they can pretty much do what they want because it's, it's the old rules.
Gotcha. So the submarine development, which is a problem all throughout the Treasure Valley, right? So the, the concept of the submarine development where somebody pop purchases the rights to do something, like Middleton experienced this really, really intensely. People had the right to do things and there was no sunset on those rights. And then, you know, 10 or 15 years later, the city dynamic has changed, the population has changed. They're like, hey, man, you remember when you told me I could do this? I'm gonna do that right now. And they're like, wait, but.
And a lot of things could have changed by then, right?
Right, right, right.
And so you want to make sure that they comply, you know? And, and I understand that there's probably some, some opponents out there that, that feel that once a development agreement is made, that, that it should just stand. You know, and I understand their side of that.
Sure.
But being a former city councilman and sitting through all of the land planning and zoning and all of the things that I went through, I think some adjustments need to be made this time. Yeah.
What adjustments, say you had a little magic wand, what adjustments would you make right now to the comprehensive plan?
To the comp plan?
Well, yeah, well, let's, let's say, let's say density, let's say like the, the whole thing. What would you do?
Comp plan's totally different than what I'm, than what I'm talking about as far as the development agreement and the planning and zoning.
Let's stick with that.
Yeah. But, but let me, let me go back to the comp plan. That's, comp plan's a guide.
Sure.
Right? So it's, it's created to, to give guidance for what the city wants to see as things are getting developed. It's, it's not written stone or a rule. They're, they're getting ready to do the, the density, change, change part of the density code or not code, but elements in.
Like allowances and stuff.
Yeah. In, in the, in the comp plan.
And they're reducing to, I started to interrupt, but that they're, they're reducing like the low, a couple of the lowest density options within the city, right? Like they're eliminating stuff that where it's like 2,000 square foot lotter and don't quote me on that, but that's the idea where it's like, okay, we don't, like, let's not engage in this style of building.
Right, right. And, and, and we don't want to see that. I mean, the whole, the whole idea was, you know, Eagle has always been open space, open space, open space.
Sure.
And we want that. And when you start pushing houses, you know, five feet from each other, it just looks like just a dense population. And, and, you know, people want their privacy and you can't get privacy with, you know, a five foot, five foot setback, you know? So yeah, I think it's a, and originally in 2017, I was on that committee when they rewrote the comp plan. So I was involved at that, at that time too. So I think it's a good idea that the city is looking at it and that they're having an open house to discuss it. And, and I think in most cases, the developers are the ones that aren't going to want to see that happen, but the residents will. Yeah.
Right. And do you, are you in favor of reducing the, the number of options of low density lots? Or, or excuse me, um, excuse me, high density lots, complete opposite of what I said. Like they're pushing more towards lower density. Are you in favor of, you know, starting to pull back on the options where it's like, oh, you have that, like the tiniest lot in the city. It's like, nah, we probably don't. Like we have a bunch of different options for lot size and development size and proximity to downtown and everything. We probably don't need, you know, like the bottom two or something like that.
Yeah. And, and I'm, I'm for that. I, I want to see more space, you know, and less dense, density.
Gotcha.
That's just my preference. I would also like to, to point out that, you know, one of the things in the, in the development agreements that I'd like to see is, you know, currently right now as it's written, I don't know it word for word or where it's found in the statutes, but in, on most development agreements, it has a a total percentage of coverage that you can have on a lot. So I'll give you an example. If you have a 10,000 square foot lot or a 25,000 square foot lot, right now code is you can build 40%.
Sure.
Right? 40% home. When you look at a 10,000 square foot lot and you say you can build 40% and you put a 25 to 3,000 square foot home on a 10 foot, 10,000 square foot lot, there is no yard. It's literally a five foot side, 25 foot as required setbacks, front and rear. And it just doesn't look right, right? And, and to me, I think they need to adjust that. Maybe go, if they keep 10 foot, 10,000 square foot lots and, and want that allowable, maybe that goes to, you know, maybe 25% or 30% coverage as opposed to 40. And then you, then you scale it up. When you get to the 25,000 square foot, then yeah, 40% is okay.
That makes a lot more sense. So essentially it's like, look, the spirit of the law, or the spirit of the, the requirements is that you have some open space within the lot. But if, if you just do the 40% with no sliding scale depending on lot size, then you end up with a piddly little, like nothing in the front and back. And that kind of flies in the face of it. So if what we really want is to make sure that there's always adequate open space within each of the individual house developments, then it really should be like, hey, look, you can build on 10, but you only get, you're like, make it two stories and then you'll have more front and back space, like no problem. And then if you want to, you know, cover an acre place with some, you know, I don't know, gigantic, but what's a gigantic Taj Mahal? There you go. You want a Taj Mahal on the two acres. Like get wild, man. No problem. Paint it all white. Like just go for it.
Yeah. And, and another thing on that is, you know, if you can get that changed in the development agreements to those, to those numbers, you also, you had mentioned two-story house on a, on a 10,000 square foot lot. That would be okay, but you got to look at transitions too. So if you're backing up to an existing neighborhood, right? And you have a two-story home and you're building a two-story home, that's great. That's fine because the transitions fit.
Right.
But if you have a.
And you're just looking down.
If you have a single family, right? And then you build a two-story, then you're, you're really encroaching on privacy. And, and we're, we're seeing that a lot right now in the community and the, in the, in the current developments that are going on.
Gotcha. That's, that's, this is really detailed, cool stuff. Like I, I'm not a planning and zoning guy, but the, what you're saying.
I'm not either. Yeah. I'm not a planning and zoning guy either, but you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm the kind of guy that wants to, to make sure that community gets what the community wants, right? And, and not the developers. And I'm not against development. I'm not against developers. I, I want to make that perfectly clear. Cause I know I'll probably get bashed for it by not, you know, by, by speaking this way.
Oh yeah. Well, I mean, you're a terrible person, whatever.
But, but, but developers, you know, they, they come and go. Most of them don't even live here, right? The developers come in, they're investors, they come in, they buy properties, they, they, they plan developments. And, and then they either sell or they build and then they go away. So, you know, we have to make it right for our citizens before we make it right for the developers. And I think developers need, you know, we need to, we need to sit down and talk about what the developers should be bringing to the city. You know, open space is great, but what else can they provide? You know, can they provide? You know, can they provide in their development, maybe some agricultural or community gardens in that open space? So that the community can, you know, do that kind of stuff. They say, you know, hey, we'll give you 12 acres for a school. Well, that's great that the school district gets this, gets the, gets the, the land. But when can the school build? When can the school district build? They don't have the funds. So then that land just sits there, right?
And then they may not need it too.
Correct.
Right? Like if you look at West Ada School District, there is a lot sitting in Dry Creek Ranch that was slotted for an elementary school and it was marketed as like, this is going to be an elementary school. But the problem is you don't have a need for an elementary school in this portion of West Ada. Right? Now, if you want to go to Star, yeah, man, you need an elementary school there like 10 minutes ago, right? So you have these problems where you're being, it's being marketed as like, oh yeah, we'll insert this educational thing here, but they don't need it. So then the school goes back into the hands of the developer. If the school district signs off on it and they're like, no, you can have it back. Or, you know, you could, you could, uh, could end up going to like a private school or charter school. So you have all of these, these issues where people are like, oh, well, we'll, we'll accommodate with, by donating a portion of land, but it may not.
Never gets used.
Never gets used and it may not fit within the school district's needs. So although it sounds good, like, no, no, we're helping build the community. It's like, you're not building that, that, there's no school that will ever go there.
Yeah. And that, and that's a concern.
Right. So, right. When we're talking about services like, like education, obviously Eagle does not participate in education. But you know, the, the concern that we had with emergency services like police was a really big thing in 2023, especially with Abamo. And we are getting more law enforcement officers now. We are dipping into our savings in order to do that. What do you think? What do you think about the state of law enforcement in Eagle? Do we need the additional members that are coming on to the, uh?
Yes.
Police department?
Yes.
How do we pay for that? And what do we gauge that need off of?
You know, that's a great question. How do, how do we get the, the revenue to, to, to support that? You know, I, I, I don't know. That's, these are things that we need to discuss as a council and with the mayor during the budget process. You know, they have a, they have a, a capital, capital plan that they, they have kind of like a savings account. Where they break everything down and say, hey, we want to save this much to, you know, use, use in the future, so on and so forth. And maybe that needs to be modified so that we can have the funds to pay, to pay for the, the law enforcement that we need in Eagle. And when I say we need it, crime is not very high in Eagle and it's because of our police force. It's because of the job that they do. And to give them more, more individuals to, to roam, to roam our streets is nothing but a benefit to all of the citizens in our community. I, I'm, I'm fully behind law enforcement.
Gotcha. And as far as how to pay for them, it's like, hey, there are a lot of moving pieces in the budget, it sounds like. And you're saying, hey, you know, we should sit down.
And they did that. That's, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we're getting another, I think we're getting another sheriff and a canine handler or something like that.
Right. And we are increasing, I believe, property tax, uh, foregone.
Yep. They foregone and all that. Yeah. So that, that'll get it, that'll get it started for, for this next fiscal year.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And again, the, you know, obviously nobody wants property taxes to increase.
No.
It's not something that people are, you know, fans of, but we are growing as well, right? So that, that is, that is a requirement. And unlike, you know, other states that surround us, if you go up a thousand homes in the city of Eagle, right? We increased by like 300 something, don't we? Don't you give out, doesn't City of Eagle give out like three or 400 building permits per year?
I think it's a little more than that.
Is it more than that?
Well, yeah, when, when it's booming, yes. It's more like 600 or 700 when it's booming. Okay. During COVID, it wasn't nearly that many.
Gotcha. The city has a budget. As you increase the number of people paying for that budget, you don't just automatically get more money, revenue coming in.
No, you got to service all those people that just came in.
Right. You have to service them. And when you add rooftops, that does not mean you add revenue. The roof, the number of people paying for the budget and the budget itself are completely detached.
Correct.
Right? And this is again, in sharp contrast to other states that are around us, like in the state I came from. If you added another rooftop, that was another house paying. They assessed your value and they're like, all right, you owe us X percent of the, the assessed value of your property. Boom. That goes in. If you had another hundred houses or like each of you was paying that X percent, that's it. And the budget just rises with the city. But here, the budget stays until they increase the budget. So if you have a hundred people paying for this X number of dollars, or you have a thousand people paying for the X number of dollars, it doesn't matter. You just divide that amongst all of the viable, all of the, all of the paying households, right?
Correct.
So we have been increasing the number of people and number of houses within the area without increasing our budget for the city, which means people's property taxes would be coming down as we increase the number of people paying for the fixed price of the, the property tax. So we have had an increase in property tax to pay for some things like law enforcement. But again, in, in the years when we didn't take it and we kept growing, that meant people's property taxes, at least for the city, went down.
Yeah. And, and you know, one of the things that, that you need to look at is, uh, if, if I'm not misquoting, I believe Eagle is one of the lowest property tax cities in Idaho. So, you know, when people say, uh, you know, my property taxes is going up, it's maybe $30, right? A year.
Push that guy forward again. You keep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep leaning this way, this way.
Towards me. There you go.
I keep leaning in, leaning in.
Listen, you gotta lean into the work. I appreciate it.
I'm just, yeah, I, I just want to get my point across, man.
God bless it. Yeah. I'm sorry, interrupted you. You were saying, uh, the, the property tax, people, uh, when we're booming, what were we saying? We're in the middle of something.
I was, I was just saying.
It just screwed you up.
Eagle, Eagle has a, you know, one of, one of the lowest.
Lowest property.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and you have to expect it. I'm an Eagle resident too. And when I see these property tax increases, I know it's going for the benefit of our community, plain and simple.
Right.
And I understand there's some out there that are on fixed incomes and things like that. And, and, you know, I really feel for those people. And, and I, you know, I wish we didn't have to do that for everybody, but it is what it is. And you have to, you have to suck it up and, and pay your portions and make sure that the city can, can run.
Right. Um, there's a, there's a hilarious problem and it's not actually that hilarious, but some of the sentiment is hilarious. In Star in Middleton, you have the Star Fire District, Star Middleton Fire District. Okay. The problem that they're running into is that Star is like doubled in size in the last five years, right? Literally went from like 10,000 to 20,000, just all kinds of people there. And the fire district does get impact fees, which means they have funding to build like capital improvements, right? So they can build the new fire station. But the developers just pay one impact fee per house, whatever, whatever the rate might be, but they're like, I'm not paying you for like 10 years or like a hundred. Like I'll pay you a thousand bucks or whatever the impact fee is. And you know, we move on and you don't build your, but the people of Star have to fund the, the actual salaries for the fire department. So Star has this new fire department that's unstaffed. People are rejecting an override levy that would allow Star Fire, Star Fire to get more money to staff the firehouse, right? The new firehouse. And people are criticizing it, saying, we can't handle any more property tax increases. But the rub is this, the property taxes in Star are lower now than they were in 2020. Because you've doubled the number of people paying and you've only increased the budget by like 40% or something. So you have twice as many people, you have 200% of the people paying for 140% of the original budget. And everybody's like, no, we can't handle any more increases. Like everything has gone down. If you, if they were still at the original budget from 2020, that you would have more than enough money. Like if the people that existed there in 2020 were paying the same that they were paying in 2020, you would have plenty of money. So it's, it's this very odd system of, or very convoluted, rather. It's not, you know, it's just, it's, it's not as, come on, what am I saying? Intuitive as people.
Yeah. And it's, it's not easy, you know, the, the impact fees go to, you know, to equipment and buildings, you know, it's not, it's not staffing.
Right.
And, and, and that's hard because you do have the developers that come up with, you know, a one-time payment, so to speak, to, to, for the impact fees of that. And when they sell the houses and things like that. But it's, it's a necessity. I mean, wouldn't you think that safety would be like the number one priority in most people? They, they want to make sure that their houses are protected if there's a range fire.
Okay. But here's the thing, here's the thing though. Let's use that for, let's use that for law enforcement. Safety should be the number one thing. We should, we should all want law enforcement. Great. We already have a safe place, Kenny. You don't need more cops. It's already safe, right? So it's like, okay, do we have to wait for it to be unsafe before we justify spending to keep it safe?
Yeah.
Or like reduce, that's my question. This is, this is the conflict, right? Do you spend before it becomes a problem or do you force it to become a problem before you spend?
Yeah. Do you wait until something tragic happens, you know, before you actually take action?
What do you say? What do you think?
I, I say you, you, you get ahead of the game. You, you, you make it so that it never comes, that it never happens. And the only way to do that is, is, you know, to continue to, to increase our, our law enforcement and our fire departments and, and all of that to, to protect our citizens. I mean, it's all about protecting our, our community. You know, I, I'd hate to see anything happen like happen in, in that other state. You know, where, where everybody's homes are just devastated and gone.
Yeah. My blood pressure goes up. I can't, I can't.
But you know, heaven forbid that happened here in, in our small little community. You know, we, we would be devastated. You know, we would all just be devastated.
I want to come back to something you, you mentioned earlier with selling Eagle and attracting, having an economic developer. So how do we sell Eagle and attract businesses into Eagle? And two, can you introduce me to the person who developed Pet IQ so they can explain what it does? And can we please not talk about it? Because I have no, everyone's like homegrown businesses, Pet IQ right on the corner. I don't know what Pet IQ does. I know it's homegrown. Everyone who I've ever talked to, like we have Pet IQ. What is Pet IQ? I don't know. Don't even tell me. Just Pet IQ if you're out there, holler at me. I want to have you on the show. I want to understand what you do. But aside from the miracle of Pet IQ, because apparently that's the most notable homegrown business ever in the history of Eagle.
It is.
Awesome. Awesome. How do we get more either homegrown businesses? What do we have to do to create an environment, a fertile, fertile environment for homegrown businesses to, to start, thrive and grow? And how do we bring other, or should we bring outside businesses into the city as well?
Yeah. I think outside businesses are, would be great for the community, you know?
How do we do that?
Well, again, you know, you have to have somebody that's good at marketing, right? That, that could literally put together a program to sell our city, right? Here's what Eagle's about. Here's, you know, here's the homes that we have here. Here are the residents that we have here. Here are the, the, all of the fun things that you can do in Eagle, you know, it's, it's, it's a marketing program is what it is. And then you take those, you take those out and, and you start selling Eagle. And you try to bring in organizations that, you know, want to live and work and play right here in, in this community. Eagles, you know, safety, we, we have a safe Eagle. And, and you sell it. You just have to sell it. And, and it takes a, it takes the right individual to do it. But again, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot of land left in Eagle, but what we do have as far as for mixed use and for commercial, I, I think we need to bring in those larger corporations in any way we can.
You know, we need to bring in, we need to bring in awesome burgers and awesome Chinese food. I want both of those things. What's your favorite burger in the city of Eagle?
You really want me to say?
Nobody can name one. No, I don't. Don't tell me. But if.
I will name it.
Tell me off air, you have a place that's an awesome burger in the city of Eagle. Okay. We're going.
Yeah. I don't want to offend any of my.
Right now, we're gonna go today.
I don't want to offend any of my friends or businesses.
That's good. That's good. Okay. Great. Bad question then. But like it's, it's one of those things where I, I think people coming in here. And you know, I was one of those people at, at a time. I think people coming into this area are wanting more services. And I think to your point, figure out what those services are, figure out what those people are. Figure out the demographic, the income level, the interest, all the thing. And then you're saying, you essentially just put that all together and you're like, okay, what companies are looking for this population format?
Yeah.
Go out and get them. Is it be it a tennis shop, a golf shop, fishing shop, burger place, you know?
You know, yeah, somebody that builds knives. Yeah.
Like Japanese knives?
No, yeah. Well, you know, whatever, 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 whatever product or service that, that somebody has, you know, and you mentioned like, you know, more burger places and restaurants. And, and, and we, we do have quite a, quite a lot of restaurants.
Yeah.
In Eagle.
Dude, when's the last time you went to the Rib Shack and got the garbage can lid?
Their food is so good.
It's so good.
Yeah. There's the sauces, the sauces over there.
Eight sauce thing.
My, my mouth is watering right now.
I know. Do you, have you been in there recently? Um, when they, uh, last time I went in there and it's like, I don't go out much. Like I, I'm here and then I go home and hang with my kids, but, um, last time I went in there with a buddy, we went for lunch and they're like, do you guys want a rib? I'm like, well, yeah, we're here to order ribs. They're like, no, no, do you want a rib right now? It's like, like while I'm in line and they handed us a rib and they're like, there are paper towels right there. I was like, oh, hell yeah. Just munching on a rib.
Before you order.
Before I even got to order. It's like, God bless it, man. Like this.
Those are, those are the kind of community, you know, uh, businesses that we want. You know, we love, we love our small, small businesses here in Eagle. And I know they're, they're getting hammered right now with the, you know, the downtown. And, and it's, it's, it's a shame, but you know, it has to be done. You know, we have to get ACHD to, to spend some money in our, in our community. Because you know, we, when we tax and give our money to the ACHD and, and we get put on a five-year plan, those five-year plans end up turning into 10 and 15-year plans, right? And so we finally are on their schedule. So we need to get it done. It's, it's only going to improve, you know, our, our, our infrastructure that we desperately need help with.
Speaking of infrastructure, there are, it appears that there are two minds about the downtown Eagle corridor. Some people are saying, hey, that's a nice, but like, look at Spitfire Taco, great, like second story, you know, balcony. I may, may not have been there before, like, or look at this place or that place, whatever it is. And you know, like, they see the buildings downtown. They're like, this is going to be really slick and nice as this develops out. And like you got Rembrandt and you got the lot next door. You got all this, all that stuff.
Yeah.
And there are other people that are like, oh my God, stop everything.
Yeah.
And these two people are like kind of at odds with each other because some people like development. They like breweries, they like Spitfire. They like, you know, new stuff downtown and other people are like, this is not, this is not the Eagle that was, right? And frankly, it's not even the Eagle that I saw when I was here in like 21. We, I remember looking down the street and like, wow, this is really, really cool. Looks totally different. Three and a half years later.
It is. And it's changed. And you know, the, all the old school residents like myself, we've, we've seen just major, major changes in the community, but that's expected. When you grow, you're going to have changes. And you just have to make the best situation out of the, out of, you know, to come out of, of that. And yeah, there's, there's, uh, our downtown is, is, is not the quaint cowboy village anymore. But.
Yeah. Uh, the place I moved from, um, actually, everybody that moves here, there are like a lot of people from my, you know, it's like 40,000, 30 to 40,000 population little town that I had moved from, um, that like literally like, oh, this is the Danville of the north, right? Because it, I remember I had a neighbor across the street who was joking about how he was like, yeah, we used to have like a mouse problem. Because every time they would like tear up the, the fields, all the mice would run in. He's like, if you went downtown, you didn't have like a bunch of the PTA moms down there. You just had a bunch of cowboys down there, you know, that, that had gotten off work. And there was that transition. He'd seen it. He'd lived there for like four years. Beautiful, wonderful man. He was, he was a really cool guy. But understanding that from my perspective then, it was like, okay, but I don't remember that. Like I wasn't here for the cowboy hat dudes. Like I just saw the PTA moms, right? Like that's what it is. But I am seeing it here. I am seeing that transition and it is interesting because it's like, look, you know, you're part of the reason it's changing, Matt. You know, like you moved here and you know, this is, you can, you can bemoan the change, but you're part of the reason it's changing, right? For the people that, that see it changing, that they're not happy about it, is there something that you would say to them in particular?
Yeah. I, you know, um, my, my heart is this city. I, I absolutely love this city. And, and some of the growth has really shocked me, you know? I, I wasn't expecting our city to, to grow as fast as it grew. You know, but when you have so many people coming in from, from other states and increasing the number of, of, of people, you gotta expect some change. And status quo and just being a bedroom community, we, we can't do that. We, we won't be able to support the city and provide the services that we need, right?
Why not? Explain this to me.
Well, because just having a bedroom community means, you know, travelers are, we've, we've got three or four different highways that run through Eagle. And so we're a, we're a transition point, right? To get to Boise, you have to go through Eagle if you're coming from Meridian. If you want to go to Meridian, you gotta go through, you know, through Eagle. If you're going to go to Star or Middleton, you have to go through Eagle. And, and the traffic doesn't stop when, when you don't have businesses or services, right? They're just not going to stop. So that puts the burden completely on the residences. And so that's why we need to build more business and attract more business here so that we become a destination and not a travel through point.
Gotcha. So we need the tax revenue to support the services from people that are coming through. So if you're coming from Boise and you stop for lunch or you're coming from Middleton, the opposite direction, you stop for whatever. But we get that tax revenue. So we're aggregating money from outside our geographic bounds. So the burden of supporting everything is not just.
Just on residents. Yeah. That's important.
Yeah. Yeah, that is. Kenny, we've talked about a lot of things today.
Yeah.
My goodness.
Hopefully I didn't get you off too, too, too much of the track.
No, absolutely not. No, absolutely not. Um, listen, hit, I mean, is there anything you want to say? Is there anything you want to talk about that we haven't hit? We've, you know, law enforcement, funding, you know, ACH, like what?
Yeah, no, I think we, I think we touched bases on on quite a bit. You know, there's a, there's a little bit more information on my website of of what my vision and and goals are. It's just kennypitman.us and that's two Ts, kennypitman.us. And and the US, just as a, as a fun little pun, it's, it's, it's not because I wanted United States as a, as a, as a ending on my website. It's, I I look at it as an us, right? It's kennypitman.us and and us being the Eagle community. I just want to serve. That's, that's my heart, Matt. And, you know, I think I can work with just about anybody. And and I want to bring some new fresh ideas to the council and to the mayor. And and I want to support this city in the best way I know how.
God bless it, man. Well, listen, thank you for what you're doing, right? Just running. I I had a county clerk, Trent Tripleton, right before you and great guy. And I've also had Secretary of State Phil Mcgrane, and both of them have talked about how difficult it is for people to run and how hard it is and the nastiness and the craziness. And and again, just the difficulty of running. So, you know, when we have such an interest in in people like you running for City of Eagle, it's like, whether you win or not, that the people that are stepping up and putting their, you know, hat in the ring and and taking that heat, I just, I have a great appreciation for you. So thank you for what you're doing. Thanks for, uh, thanks for making it happen.
No, I I appreciate the time and the opportunity. And and again, you know, I I feel the same way. You know, all the individuals that put their name in and and get brutalized because it's a political, you know, election. I I feel for them and and I I'm just happy that they they stepped up, right? They're not the complainers. They're the ones that are actually stepping up and wanting to do something for the community. Whether, whether they agree with me on things or not, they they stepped up and that's absolutely phenomenal. Yeah, we, we need those types of people.
We do, man. Good luck with your campaign and I guess we'll see what happens in two months.
God bless you, brother. Thanks.